Or to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I will now go around the virtual room and confirm that we can all hear and be heard in the order on my screen. Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Laura Zeiten.
Here.
Lisa Misselli.
Here.
I'm Mitch Cohen. Kristen Wickston could not be with us tonight. She is traveling at this very moment and it's probably ill suited to 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 join a Zoom from. I don't know, an airplane or a train or whatever she's on right now. Also with us are some key members of staff. We have interim town administrator Mike Gallagher.
President.
And interim assistant town administrator Diane Whackel.
Present.
And we also have North Row Cable with us as always to facilitate the technology of the meeting. And with that, let's get started. First item on our agenda as always is public comment. Are there any members of our audience that wish to to offer any comment or input? We will allow comment during our agenda items, but typically for anything that is not on our agenda, just raise your virtual hand and I'll be happy to recognize you. Going once, so far, nothing. Going twice. All right, we will continue along with first regular order of business, which is approval of meeting minutes and the first is the 11th of October. Twenty twenty three. Is there a motion?
Um, I have a motion. I move the board approve the October 11th, twenty twenty three, meeting minutes as presented.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
And I'm so used to asking also for Kristen, but not today. I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Uh, is there a motion on October twenty three, twenty twenty three, meeting minutes?
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the October twenty third, twenty twenty three, meeting minutes as presented.
Okay, motion's been made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor? Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Hi.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Meeting minutes are approved. Uh, and next up, we have the Fire Station Building Committee progress update and we have about a hundred people to bring in. Um, so I will start that process and Owen, I know you've got some names also. You can do that if you wish. So this is Dawn Rand. We have. So I'm bringing in members of the building committee, fire staff, architects, et cetera.
Mister Chair, I don't think the whole building committee was planning.
Oh, okay. I volunteered them anyway. Well, if anyone wants to get out, I think you can. Do that on your own or I can boot you out if you so desire. Somebody took me up on that offer. Um, let's see.
Be there and assist Todd.
Let me see, one more name we're waiting for. Oops. Zoom moves so fast that. I almost let in some wrong people. All right, if there are any members of the virtual audience that I have not yet brought in that would like to be that are part of either the Fire Station Building Committee or or staff involved in the process. Here we go. We've got. Judy and Tony Armada. I don't know that name off the top of my head. Is that somebody? Somebody that person has raised their hand. Maybe it's. Chief, does that name sound familiar to you?
No, I'm not part of the committee.
Okay.
Amy or Janet are coming in today?
Uh, no, he's not going to join us tonight.
Okay. Does that name sound familiar to you? Judy and Tony Armada?
No, it doesn't.
All right, if um. Judy and Tony, you can change your name to something that we would recognize if. Um, if you're part of this group, if not, I will certainly recognize you as an audience member when we get to that part of the discussion. Um, all right, so we've got a lot to talk about. Uh, we are here to get the first update. From the Fire Station Building Committee after uh, starting, starting the process after uh, an extensive delay. Due to buying the property and everything like that, uh, the group has gotten back together, had a few meetings. And I thought it was a good idea um, for the select board to get up to speed as to where things are because this is a a very, very important. Um, process uh, for the town, so um. Uh, Chief, I guess I'll turn it over to you for some further introductions. I don't know who's going to be driving the show, but I'd love for everyone to introduce themselves. Um, and uh, and get going.
That's great. Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh. I'm going to be doing a short uh, history, just like you said, to give you a history of how we, how we are, the whole process. And uh, I'd like if Janet and Amy from HKT can go ahead and introduce ourselves.
I I'm Amy Dunlap from HKT Architects. I'm a principal here. And I'm Janet Slamenda from HKT Architects, also a principal.
And if Todd and Tim from our OPM Colliers could take a second and introduce themselves.
Sure. Uh, thanks, Chief. Uh, my name is Tim Alex. I'm the uh, project director for uh, Colliers Project Leaders or the owner's project manager for this project.
Hi, everyone. I'm Todd Ashford, Assistant Project Manager on the project with uh, Tim from Colliers Project Leaders.
Thanks, Todd. And if any members of the uh, building committee that are here would like to introduce themselves, Mister Rappis here, I know, and I can see that. Eric is here, Dawn, and there's Diana. You guys, if you want to say hi and then go or stay or go away, it's up to you. Dawn Rappa, good evening.
Hi, Diane Nicholas.
Dawn's roaming around there too. And of course, there's Deputy Casey there looking all nice and warm and. Dawn's got her hand up. It's just, I think just. Uh, so I'm going to start with a quick presentation, if I may.
Sure. Uh, Dawn, you've got your, your hand up. You can unmute yourself. You're, you're in the meeting if you want to introduce yourself. Say hello, Dawn Rand, Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. Okay. Chief, go ahead.
So a little bit about the fire station. So interestingly enough, no one on was currently sitting on the board. Was a member of the board way back when we uh, went through the approval process. Ability Committee. Chairman, Chairman Cohen was a member of the feasibility committee, so he's got the most uh, intimate knowledge. But I wanted to just take a second and go through and give you guys a bit of the history and hit on some of the critical uh, reasons of why we need this. Um. He says as he tries to move to fly. There we go. So. The station we're in now was built in nineteen seventy five and occupied, I'm sorry, occupied in seventy five. At the time it was designed, we had two full-time firefighters, so we're just. Uh, we didn't offer ambulance service. There was actually no sleeping quarters designed. If you've been in the fire station, if been upstairs, that was one big open room. Uh, which is now the two dorms, uh, my office and uh, find office. For um, uh, deputy and our ASMA coordinator. And and the focus at the time was on current space needs rather than future growth. And I found this letter from then Chief Earl Pierce. And Chief Pierce says, uh, you know, we're, we're writing a letter to support. Right. But we want you to know that we don't like the site, where he says, we do not feel this is the most excellent choices it's in town. I would agree. It's one of the big problems we have is the site to get out onto Main Street, West Main Street is difficult and dangerous. And he talks about the obvious need for a new facility. As the present station was built almost fifty years ago. Well, that sounds familiar. The uh, since uh, since then, the number and size of our apparatus has increased. Yep, sounds familiar. Uh, we have, we have uh, equipment stored outside. Sounds familiar. So very interesting. A lot of the same things are happening now that were happening fifty years ago. So the current station is a steel frame with concrete block. It's about a little over eleven thousand square feet with a. Floor being twenty nine hundred and the first floor being eighty two hundred. Other parking for trucks and ambulance is maxed out. Here's some examples of that. A very inadequate space for current staffing and there's no female facilities. And uh, while the mechanical systems are working, they are starting to eat out and we're. This is what I'm talking about. I want to say we're maxed out for space. To get from one side of the station to the other between the ambulances, you have to actually climb up over one ambulance to get to the other. And to get past the front of the uh, of the, the engines, uh, that's actually the rescue truck looking out there, the very. One, you'd have to open a door and try and climb up around behind you. Very difficult, very tight. Our, our turnout gear is sitting on the apparatus floor and it's not supposed to be exposed to carcinogens because it gets its own at fires. And it's not supposed to be exposed to UV light because it breaks it down. Picture on uh, in the, we're next to the uh, our water heater. That's actually our dive equipment is being stored in our, our utility room. No place to store it. So uh, we, we use every little area we can find to store a thing. This is just a real quick comparison. So when it was built, there was only two members. Birthdays only. Now I have twenty members that work twenty-four hour shift. Station was built before we offered uh, ambulance. It was a different, it was a ambulance service. We now have three ambulances, all the supplies, all the training equipment that goes along with that. It's built the house fire trucks that were seventies, not trucks that were built in twenty three, which are much bigger. Uh, technically, obviously take a lot more room and they're much more um, technical, a lot more uh. Electronics involved and I, and we really don't want to store them outside. Yes, it's okay if they get wet, obviously. Ambulances, we actually can't store them, not allowed to. Station was built before the health hazard related with firefighting and exhaust system. The uh, recognized that is cancer, which is the number one cause of uh, our fatalities right now. The new fire stations have to have iron ventilation and separation. Hazard levels. Wasn't designed to protect firefighting gear as I had mentioned, uh. The station uh, was not designed to address the administrative needs of the department. Admin, a hazmat assistant, a deputy, uh, are just expanded well beyond all capability. Sleeping quarters in the restrooms and the shower facilities, which are, we have one shower facility on the second floor and it's a gang shower. We have no separate uh, facilities for genders. Also with the sleeping quarters, we have one person gets sick, everyone gets sick because they're all sharing these things. So. And then the current station did not address the dangers of responding through its mainstream intersection, as I said. Very dangerous intersection. And then we have for the new station is uh, much better leaves a lot of those issues. So, good timeline. Back in twenty twelve. Tom Report said, with regard to the fire stations, the project placeholder for a capital improvement that uh, has spent for renovation or relocation for the feasibility study for seventy five thousand. Feasibility, when I got hired in January of twenty sixteen, I was told that that feasibility study was imminent, was going to happen. Uh, the first, and Mitch, I'm sure you remember this, the first Fire Station feasibility committee meeting happened on October twenty second, twenty. Uh, that committee looked at a lot of different options, a lot of different sites, different things. We finally decided that. Property sixty one, sixty five, West Main Street, the old Pierce uh, gas station along with the property at ten Monroe behind it was the best. A property. Use. At the uh, twenty, at the uh. April twenty two, April twenty second, that twenty nineteen meeting, article twenty was approved appropriately appropriating three million five hundred thousand dollars to purchase. Sixty one sixty five, West Main, ten Monroe, to hire our own as project manager who is here with us today and to hire our architect if for design fee. Uh, sometime around May, uh, we started negotiations with the uh, current owner. And around the same time, we had determined that we needed to do a, to go to the historic district to get permission to demo. One sixty five, because it was a historical. And they said they voted uh, unanimously that it was. Taken down. Sometime around here, uh, they found contamination. Now, it's really important to understand that. That documentation that the site was clean, it was all set, well, it was all clean and all set from gasoline. When we tore down the building, uh, where the garage used to be, they found contamination of it. Uh. Around the same time, the purchase and sales was set for twelve sixteen, twenty twenty. I want you to notice there's one, two, three, four. Four extensions, the purchase and sale. All the way up until three point four one years after the town meeting approved. The land and the reason for those extensions was uh, the purchase and sales was written in such a way that the owner had to provide us with the clean site. In order to get that clean site, they had to uh, remove some soils. They had to remove some stuff that we, uh, some uh, tanks we found. They had to test and took. As they finished the testing. Once that was all done and the site tested clean. We were able to execute the. Sales. Uh, couple of months later, we did the purchase and sale on ten Monroe. That went fairly quickly. And then the first Fire Station Building Committee meeting was held on three twenty of twenty twenty three year. Uh, on four thirteen, the OPM was uh, selected. And on five twenty, the architect was selected, a little more than four years. From the uh, town to town meeting to buy the land. But it's really important. The reason I bring this up uh, i- is that our people, firefighters, myself, everyone is, we get stopped on the street often or in stores and say, hey. Our station's being built now, right? We said, well, no, we, we, we're still going through all these steps and we're trying to get it. Well, how come it's not built? What is taking so long? We tried to go through and explain all the delays and the purchase and sales and why it had to be changed. It gets pretty cumbersome. So I really wanted to make sure I took the time at this meeting. To explain that timeline to everyone so they knew exactly uh, how it took us so long. And I wanted to take a few minutes and explain to you how critical it is, how important for the safety and health of the firefighters. Uh, and actually that, that the ability for us to do a good job for the community, how important this fire station is. Um, I can take questions or I can stop sharing and. Uh, if there's no questions for me, I'm not sure if it's Janet or Amy's going to be cheering and doing their presenting. Are there any questions for me? Through the chair?
Any questions on, on the history? Up to, up to now.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mister Chair, I'm going to share if that's okay?
Great.
Okay, whoops. Do you see um?
We do see your screen.
You see my screen? Okay.
I see, yeah, I see both. I think it's the presentation screen that I see. So it has the large slide, the, what I assume is the next slide and the area for notes.
I see. Um, let me see if I, yeah.
Yeah, you can switch it around. That works.
Okay, sorry about that. Um. So um, I'm just going to go through uh, the work that we've done to date on the project since we started working with the town this fall. Um, so we've done some engineering work and some uh, space needs assessment and conceptual plan development. I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward here. So for the engineering work, we started out by having a survey done of the site and um, the surveyor uh, got us um. Uh, all the information that the civil engineers need and that we need to move forward with the design, including uh, topography, the, the limits of the site, the boundaries and any um, features that are on the site. So we have all that information documented. And uh, the traffic analysis um, just started last week. We had traffic engineers out there uh, starting to do counts of the vehicles that are coming down um. Route twenty there. Um, that information will be used um, as we uh, move forward with discussions with mass DOT on where the curb cuts will be and uh, what if we need lights and preemption. Um, those sorts of things. Um, we'll work through all that information uh, with the, the engineers on that. Um, so they're just starting their preliminary work to get the data they need to make those recommendations and go through the permitting process on that. Um, we've had some preliminary discussions with the HVAC engineers. The HVAC engineers attended a building committee meeting and talked a little bit about their methodology um, going forward. Um, to start out, they are proposing some different systems for analysis. They do what's called a life cycle cost analysis. Um, of different systems. Um, they look at our um, specific uh, conceptual design. Um, and estimate um, the mechanical systems options to figure out what the, the um, annual utility costs would be, what maintenance costs would be. Um, replacement costs and then the initial uh, construction costs as well. And um, they figure that, of course, uh, over a fifty year life cycle for the buildings to come up with uh, what the overall cost, both for first uh, costs and, and um, and operations costs so that they can make their recommendations for what is the most cost efficient system and, and uh, will perform best in this building moving forward. So they're just starting that process right now. And that will be ongoing throughout schematic design. And then at the end of our schematic design period, they will uh, present their results and we'll have a discussion about what the uh, mechanical systems uh, for the building will be going forward. Um, at the same time, our civil engineers have just started uh, their uh, work on the project. Um, they're looking at the preliminary building plans that we've developed. And uh, where the parking wants to be on the site, what's going to happen with the grading around the building? How do we control stormwater on the site? Um, a lot of work needs to be done. It is a bit of a complicated site with um, the grades rising um, away from route twenty. And so we want to make sure that we come up with the the best solution, both through the operations for the, the fires department as well as um, the most cost effective solution for the, the residents in um, and the town of Northborough. So they're working on that. Um, and then the next steps from an engineering standpoint, we're going to be getting all of our engineers on board. Um, but geotechnical will really be the next thing. Once we have a good conceptual plan um, laid out and we know exactly where that's going to fit on the site, then the geotechnical engineers can come out and they do borings and test pits uh, to see what's under the ground that we don't know about. They, they um. Look to see where a ledge might be, what the bearing capacity of the soil is, um, how um, water will be handled on the site, how, how well the drainage works on the site. All the information that we need uh, for the structural engineers and the civil engineers moving forward. So they will um. Start working on that. From the architectural standpoint, we started our process by doing a space needs assessment. Uh, the first thing that we do is we send out a questionnaire to um, the fire department and uh, we had great response from the fire department. We were really pleased. We had a number of staff members fill out the questionnaire. And then from that, we sat down and we met with uh, Chief Parenti and Deputy Espisi and Captain Brillhart. Talked about uh, what we read in the questionnaire, um, looked at the station, looked at their existing uh, conditions. And uh, really talked about their operations. We always think it's important to have a really good sense of how they're going to function in the station and not just sort of what their wish list is. So we were there for a number of hours talking about um, the way they work and what would work for them. Moving forward. So I think we had a really good discussion um, from all of that. One of the things that we really like to focus on is a discussion about clean station design elements. Um, as, as the chief mentioned, firefighters are constantly being exposed to carcinogens in the work that they do. And so it's important when they come into the station that there's a way for them to decontaminate their um, their equipment, their gear, as well as their bodies. And so we talk about how to move through the station and get cleaned up, how to get their gear cleaned, how to get their, their um, clothing cleaned, their equipment cleaned. And so we've been talking a lot about that and making sure that we have a good workflow that's going to work for them and that's going to minimize contaminants moving from uh, their, their gear and the trucks and the apparatus base into the administrative spaces and living spaces in the building. So something um, important to look at. And when we're talking about the program, we're talking about their current needs and what they're doing now. And we're also projecting into the future. We're talking a lot about what their anticipated staffing changes might be. And we're looking really twenty years down the road when it comes to uh, program elements. When we design a building, we try to design it for sort of a fifty year lifespan, something that's really durable and it's going to serve the needs for um, the people of, of Northborough for the next fifty years. But from a programming standpoint, it's really hard to anticipate just what changes might happen. Um, for administration and firefighting fifty years out. So we try to bring in planning for at least twenty years from a programmatic standpoint and then some flexibility so that uh, the building can adapt as much as possible moving forward. So we put all of that together and we develop um, a program, which is a spreadsheet of spaces and uh, square footages and um, and different equipment needs and things that we can use moving forward for the design. So when we did that, we came to uh, a building grand total of about twenty seven thousand square feet, gross square feet. So that includes the, the um. The spaces needed for walls, for mechanical spaces, for shafts, for things like that. Um, so it's the overall gross square footage for the building and that was divided into different categories. Um, five different categories, operations, spaces, which is the apparatus space and the spaces around the apparatus space that support the firefighters work. So those decontamination spaces that we were talking about, storage for um, hazardous materials, cleanup, storage for oxygen tanks, for medical supplies that go on the ambulances, all those sorts of support spaces. Um, administration, the office spaces for the chief, the deputy, um, administrator, other staff members, conference rooms, those sorts of things. And then staff support. We've got the living quarters for the firefighters, dorm rooms, kitchens, um, a day room, um, showers and locker rooms. That's all in the staff support space. Public spaces, the lobby, the training, um, training room, which is actually going to be multi-function. It's going to be training. Um, an emergency operations center as well as a, a community room open to members of the public um, to use when it's not in use by the fire department. And then building support, mechanical spaces, electrical spaces, um, elevators, stairs, those sorts of things. And those are the breakdowns of the um, programmatic elements in the building. We also program um, site needs as well. Um, parking is the most obvious um, element of that. Um, here we factored um, fifty-three spaces that we figured for a minimum that we'd need and that takes into account both their current staff and their projected future staff going out the twenty years. And it looks in particular at what happens at a shift change when you have uh, firefighters leaving one shift and coming in on another shift, making sure that they all have places to park. Uh, as well as visitors if they were using that community room. Um, we programmed for the fifty-three spaces minimum. Uh, we've had some conversations with the building committee since then and we're hoping to put as many public spaces in as we possibly can so that um, if possible, they could be used when uh, people are, are going downtown for other businesses as well. Um, so we're, we're doing our best to fit as much in as we can, um, given the site constraints that we've got. And that's a process that will be ongoing, um, working with the civil engineers. Um, so we've got some concept floor plans. These are very early, very preliminary floor plans. We had um, done a couple of different options that we presented to the building committee. Um, at first, just to show uh, where the, how the program was starting to lay out in a building. And then we had a meeting with the fire department again with Chief Parenti and Deputy Espisi and, and Captain Brillhart. And we looked at all of these spaces in more detail. They had a lot of really good feedback for us, things that worked, things that didn't work. And uh, what you see here is our second pass. Um, it incorporates some of the comments that the um, fire department had at that meeting. It didn't incorporate all of them. They are a work in progress and we still have some more work that needs to be done to really pick up all of their comments, but um, these are, are um. Are where we are right now with the concept development. Um, the different color coding um, ties back to that program that we were talking about. So the spaces that are sort of that pink salmon color are the apparatus, um, excuse me, the apparatus base and the support spaces. Uh, the purple color is administration. Um, the blue colors are the public zones and then the gray in here are the building support. Um, we have living quarters on the second floor, which I'll show in a minute. Um, but just to give you an idea of what's happening here, the orange arrows show the public entrance and you come into sort of a vestibule space. Let me see if I can get my laser pointer to work here. So you come into a vestibule space with a lobby. Uh, the training, community, EOC room is off of that available to the public. And then from there, it's sort of a, a closed down private zone beyond that. The administrator acting as the, the gate peeper and the meter and greeter for the building with all the offices surrounding um. The uh, the administration space over here and then the apparatus support spaces um, in this area. And you see some little arrows in here. This is what um, the analysis that we're using to sort of think about workflow through this zone and how we decontaminate the firefighters as they move into the building. So they come in um, on the trucks, they move through a decontamination room. A laundry room where they can wash their gear and their clothing. There are showers and toilet rooms down here. and toilet rooms down here, and then ultimately where their gear storage lockers are to store their gear. And so they can go through this whole zone and clean their, their gear and their clothing and their bodies before they move into the rest of the building, into the administration spaces or upstairs into the, to the living quarters. On the second floor, we've got the living quarter spaces, which is a combination of dorm rooms around the perimeter. So they all have access to natural light, some quiet study rooms. A lot of the firefighters have to do continuing education. And sometimes they have to do some paperwork. It's a nice place to go if they want to do some reading, things like that. We've got some showers and toilet rooms, and then their daily sort of living spaces, the kitchen, day room, and fitness space here. And the, the real goal, and this is to try to have a nice, clear circulation path through here as well, so that they can quickly get down to the apparatus base. You see, we have sort of a circular corridor arrangement here so that they can, from any room, quickly get down to one of the stairs, or there is a fire pole that leads down into the apparatus areas. And then so the next steps, we need to work some more on the plan, as I said, and we'll be developing the plans and starting to look at what this building actually looks like three dimensionally, putting together some massing, sort of how the, the forms start to go together to start to look like a building. And then ultimately, what the elevations look like as we add more detail into the, the overall exterior building design. We also need to work on updating the overall project schedule. We've been talking to the committee and the staff in town about all of the permitting meetings that we need to get on the, on the books. So we're, we're starting to look at that and the timeline for all of that, as well as community input meetings. I didn't conclude a slide on this. I probably should have, but we did have one public community meeting, which was a really great discussion. We had a number of people show up and we had a lot of good feedback from them. We asked some questions with multiple choice answers, asked them to write down their responses, which we collected and reviewed with them. And it gave us some, some good insight into what they're thinking. We heard a lot about making sure that the building is affordable for the community, both in terms of first cost and also long-term operations and maintenance. There were some concerns about how the town would, would vote to fund the project. And so we heard a lot about that. And also what the goals were in terms of sustainability. People were interested in reducing their energy consumption and, and looking at ways to make sure that the fire, that the current and future needs of the fire department were being addressed in this building and, and meeting their operational goals. So we got good feedback at that community meeting. We want to make sure that we continue that conversation with the community. So we need to make sure that we get some more community input meetings into the schedule. And we'll be working to develop the overall project schedule to make sure all that happens. As I said, we're going to be also getting the geotechnical work done quickly or soon, and then continuing on with the engineering analysis and, and the concept developments as we move through schematic design. So that's what I've got right now.
Thank you, Amy. Yep. Chief, does anyone else have a presentation? This concludes the presentation part, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair has a little presentation.
Great. I want to add a couple of things that, that we talked about at a meeting that I'm sure people would ask. It was, what's the schedule for making this happen? The current anticipated schedule for concluding the design process and seeking funds from the town would call for probably an early fall of next year, September, October, special town meeting. Once the design process is concluded at that point, that provides a lot of time for public input and all the work that needs to get done, not just in the design from the way it, the way the public will see the building and the firefighters will see the building, but the way the building works, because there's a lot of design and what's called bid specs that go into the process before you can go out to bid. There would need to be a, what's called a dead exclusion, special election question, ballot question. And the timing for that would be likely for the next November's presidential election. We could add, we've already confirmed with the town clerk that we could add a question on to that ballot with enough, enough notice. And that's, that's really good, because that's a, that's an election that obviously a lot of people turn out for. So we'll have, you know, a good gauge of, of town support for a project, rather than scheduling a special election. I like that. And also, special elections are kind of expensive, so this is an election we're already holding. And then the question that I know a lot of people are wondering is, what will this cost? And the answer, the answer is, is we've discussed at building committee meetings, we don't know yet. We're too early in that process. Amy, I don't know if you have a guess as to when you'll go out and get the first cost estimate?
So that's something that we'll do at the end of schematic design. And I think we need to develop the schedule a little bit more to give a timeline for it. But, but I agree, it's, it's too early for us to really know at this point.
Yep. Good. With that, questions from, from primarily from the board, and then we'll open it up to the audience? All right, Julianne and then Lisa.
So, good evening. It's nice to meet you all and thanks for that great presentation. So I think my first question would go to the chief. So, you know, it, it probably doesn't seem like 50 years is a long time for a, a fire station to be in existence, but given, you know, our, our concern about the planet, it would be nice if our buildings lasted a little longer. So in, in your, to the best of your ability, do you think that the property is big enough? Say in 40 years or 50 years, if you need expansion, that, that it would accommodate something like that?
One of the things with this property, if you've, if you've seen the, the drawing, it actually log leg, I guess, for, for the, so you, you have the front of the property that goes along 63, 65. But there's a large section that goes out if in the future we need to expand, we have that area back there.
Excellent. And, and then my other question, my only other question is, you mentioned, it's, so this would be to Amy, a traffic analysis. And, you know, a lot of people are, are, are concerned. I don't know if you've ever been in town on a Saturday morning trying to get coffee at Dunkin' Donuts. It's, it's the place to be. So will the study include weekends? And, you know, how many days of the week will that study look at the traffic pattern there?
That's a really good question, and I'm not sure I know the answer to that right now. Janet, do you know the answer to that? I, I can follow up with the engineers and, and get that information.
Right.
Well, I, I think, I think we can all agree that, that weekends, we do get a lot of traffic downtown. Would you all agree? It's people going to Wetman's and doing their, you know, their errands and stuffs and I, 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 I think that it's important, but you know, I'm not a professional here. So thank you again for that great report.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think traffic is different. I mean, during commuting hours during the week, it's very, very busy. Weekend, it's, it's also very busy in a different way. So I think it, it does make sense to take a look at traffic then. And I, and I don't know what the, what the call volume differences are, if there's enough that.
No, there really isn't. Yeah, we're, we're, we're pretty much steady across all seven days. Amy was presenting, she talked about a preemption system. That's the, something we would be putting in here, which are lights on either side that are controlled by the lights on the trucks. It turns the lights red, so it stops the traffic flow. I think out of in front of us, but doesn't allow traffic in until we get out and then there's traffic.
Thanks, Chief. Julianne, does that, that answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sure. Lisa?
Okay, I'm going to expand a little bit. And hello, it's nice to see you again. It was very nice to be at the meeting and to, to watch the presentation. I wish we had greater attendance. There may have been total of 10 residents or taxpayers there. That was kind of, kind of too bad. We need to get more people involved so that when the time comes and it goes to town meeting, they're well aware of where everything is and not the usual, oh, I didn't know, or I didn't see it. So, but back to the traffic question, is it going to, is it done by a person watching? Or is it done by the, by the wires on the road, like they usually do a regular traffic study?
Um, I believe they do the, the wires on the road to get the counts. I don't know how long they were out, out, out on the road counting them.
Because usually a normal is like a week's worth of every hour or as it goes down, because we've had them on some of the streets. So I would imagine that they would have that, Julianne, or it would be a seven-day situation. Am I, I'm not incorrect, am I?
I, I don't know. I mean, I, I believe they put the wires out on the road, but I don't know when they put them out and when they collected them. So I, I have to check with the traffic engineer to find out.
Okay. And then to the chief's point of the light, I couldn't hear everything because it sounded like it broke up. But we're assuming there'll probably be a light at the entrance.
There'll be lights on either end, so won't be at the entrance of the fire station. There'll be east and to the west. When we come out, there's a receiver that picks up a flashing light on the front of the truck, although not the con receiver, preemption receiver. What that does is it lets those lights know red, so no traffic can come in front of the station, and turn green, it don't.
Okay. And so I'm assuming too that it, that it takes care of the one at Church Street and the one at South Street as well. Because
Those ones are affected when we turn to, so in either direction. So if we're coming out, we're going left, it'll affect us, everything going left. If we come out, we go right, it'll affect everything.
Okay, and I'm sure they'll be all timed, because there's no, oh, there's no breakdown lane for, for cars to kind of pull over into. Okay, so three more questions. The complicated site, do you know if that hill behind is ledge?
We don't know.
I don't know yet.
Yeah, we don't know yet. That's part of the work of the geotechnical engineer. They'll be taking some test pits and some borings to figure out where we're putting the building, where we're putting the parking areas, what might be underground there.
Because that could be a, a problem if after everything's built, they have to blast again behind it. Is there is there a problem with that happening if like 20 years from now we expand? And we have to take bound some of that hill, or most of that hill will be gone by the time there. But that's a concern, I think. So let's see, another another question I had was, at our meeting, I know a couple of us had asked about having options to, at least two, two or options to make a choice on. It sounds like you've already done that at the committee? And you've only already chosen one route to go? Is that correct?
We've presented floor plans, concept floor plans to the committee. And then we've been working with the fire department to make sure that the flow works for their operations and that the arrangement of spaces works for their operations. It's just the first step and the concept development. Once we start looking at what the building might look like three dimensionally, that plan gets revisited and reworked to work with the elevations as well. So, but right now, we're just trying to make sure that we have the arrangement of spaces in a way that works for the fire department's operations. So it's, it's very preliminary and there will be room for changing it.
And I guess the last question I have is probably not, not for you, but when we do a 50-year lifecycle, it seems to be as what appeared in the last, in the letter that the chief had shown in 1974, 1975. He talked about 50-year issue. We waited 50 years to get a new, new building, and now we're going to do it again. And so we did it again. And now I'm wondering if a 50-year is, is actually realistic. I mean, I agree with Julianne in that I think we need to use materials that would be, you know, like a brick and steel and all that. But, but I'm wondering if 50 years is really responsible. I think maybe we should do a 35-year be the way everything's changing so quickly that it's a I think a pipe dream for 50 years. But, all right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Lisa. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll open it up to questions from the audience. We have three hands up thus far. First, I'll bring in Kelly Gannett.
Hi, thank you so much. Kelly Gannett, 69 North Gate Road. I just, Julianne kind of touched upon it. Is it possible, Amy, for you to draw a picture of where the building is on that little, it was the second to last slide that you had up? I'm just trying to see where you're envisioning that on the lot and, and where the lot line is on that.
Yeah, so that's something that we're still working through with the civil engineers, to be honest. I mean, we know that the building will be running parallel to Route 20, that the apparatus will go straight out to Route 20. But exactly how the building fits on the site there is something we're still working through, looking at the access points, the, the topography, looking at where the parking might want to be and everything. So that's why we didn't include a site plan at this point, frankly, because we have so many different ideas going on behind the scenes that we need to sort of flush out before we, we know exactly where we're going to recommend putting the building on the site.
Okay. And then Chief Parenti mentioned that, so it, so is it kind of like, like an L shape? The lot itself?
The, the lot itself? Yeah, the, the lot itself, yeah, an L shape is, is a good example, but it's a a fat bottom and a thin top. So
Triangular almost kind of type?
Yeah, so 6165 runs up, I'm here showing, like you can see where I am. 6165 runs along Route 20, then there's a section that runs back towards where the town water tank is.
Yes.
Back up in that direction.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then it was just the other thing, as I agree, I think what Julianne was saying about, I, I'm hoping that the engineers studied the traffic for 24/7, for seven period. I think any snippet of that wouldn't be a realistic study. So I'm sure they did it right. I hope. Fingers crossed. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much, Kelly. Next up, we have Judy and Tony Armada. I'll bring you in. If you could unmute yourself, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, we are the mystery Judy and Tony Armada, 6 Sawmill Drive. And we just wanted to attend tonight to put our full backing into seeing the new fire station being built and all the apparatus that is needed to go along with that. Seven years ago, I don't know if Dave Parenti remembers me or not. You do? Okay. I wouldn't be here if I wasn't for the Northborough firefighters right now. After going into cardiac arrest, after a medical procedure went terribly wrong, my husband called them. And after getting to our house, they put me into the ambulance. And for 55 minutes, Doug, Ryan, and the team worked on me with everything they had until they got me to UMass. They put the vest on me. Dave, what is the name of the vest?
Talking about the, the automatic CPR machine?
Yes.
Yeah.
They put that on me. So there is some of the apparatus that they used. Best investment the town ever made. So I am grateful to this fire station, the, the entire Northborough firefighters, police, everybody. And as is my husband, Tony.
Well, thank you, you know, very much for that incredible story. Thank you. Hard to top that. Next up, we have Aaron Hutchins. Hi, Aaron, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Aaron Hutchins, 91 Brigham. Certainly appreciate the work that's gone into this fire station proposal and look forward to the continuing efforts. My comments really hinge on the traffic study, which it doesn't sound like we're going to get very many answers for tonight. Primarily, I note that when Dunkin' Donuts is its busiest, whenever that is, whether it's a weekday morning, a Saturday or Sunday morning, whatever, whatever it is, that the traffic lines up outside of that drive, drive-in, drive-through thing and just piles up along Main Street, causing the regular traffic some difficulties in navigating. And I foresee some real issues if, if a fire truck is trying to get out in the midst of that. And I also, I don't know that I've ever Um, and I also, I don't know that I've ever seen the traffic stopped going eastbound on 20 at the church street interchange where it's backed up all the way up to that 61, 65 plot. Uh, it may, it may be that that occurs occasionally. So anyway, the, the, the basis of my comments is that between Dunkin' Donuts drive through backup and the maybe rush hour traffic backup. Uh, um, there could be instances where cars are trapped between these two lights that the chief has described. Um, causing some issues for these trucks to get in and out. So it's not clear to me whether or not the traffic study has encompassed all of that because the data isn't available. But if there were an, an ability to convey these comments to the traffic engineers, so that the reports don't come back prematurely. I mean, certainly if we're investing the extra time and talking about a potential special town meeting, then we want to make sure that we have all the data so that we avoid having to go back and do things again. So that's my comment, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Aaron. Um, I'll follow up with a question to achieve. I believe that, uh, the devices that control the lights for emergency services, they can't, you can set them to sort of dump out an intersection to, um, to clear that. So, you know, in comments to things backing up from church street.
So, so what happens is, and you'll see is we're responding. What it does is it turns the light in our direction. Right? So if we're going to traffic in front of us dumps, we come out of the, if we come out and we activate it, our heading east and west will turn green. On the other side, we'll be able to come into the station, be able to be able to dump out. So it won't trap anybody in there. It'll allow, it'll allow vehicles to get out.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Aaron. Next up we have Fran Baxter. Fran, if you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is Fran Baxter. I live at 76 Cedar Hill Road. And I just wanted to voice my support for this project and I appreciate the work that's being done by the subcommittee and the, uh, select board in the process moving forward. It's a major project. Um, one of my brothers is a retired firefighter and he tells me, he assures me that the station is more than just a building and that a modern fire station will not only provide a safe and healthy working environment for the staff. It's also an integral part of their readiness when a call does come in. And then just listening to the presentation, I, I, I think we can all agree that the haphazard storage of the equipment and the vehicles parked inside, or worse, outside in the elements is not safe or efficient. And when seconds can make a difference, I think we can do better and I, and I'm sure we want to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fran. I don't see any other hands up in the audience. If anyone does, uh, go ahead and do that. I'll, I'll recognize you. I know that, uh, public input is an important thing that we've been talking about at the building committee meetings. So we've had, has been, been talked about already. We had one, um, public input meeting back a couple of weeks ago. Um, I agree with what Lisa said, it would have been great if we had had more, more attendance. I think for the next one, we've learned a lesson that we need to, uh, market that a little bit more and hopefully get more participation, uh, from members of the community. Um, we scheduled this also as a way that people could remotely connect in because our public input meetings are, are, my assumption is there will be all in person. So this way that people that might not be able to attend in-person meetings would have at least some opportunity to participate here. Um, you know, maybe we could, you know, if there are appropriate ways to do so, do a, do a survey or something like that for, for certain parts, online survey. I think the most valuable input though is, is in person. Um, my assumption is we're going to have at least two more of those meetings yet to be scheduled, but, um, probably in the pretty near future. Um, and, um, the project will also need to go in front of design review. We'll have site plan review. So there will be a, a number of opportunities for the public to, uh, to learn about this project and voice their, uh, their opinions in advance of next fall's town meeting. Um, members of the board, any other questions? Julian?
Yeah. Hi. Um, so this will be a question for one of the architects. Um, are the community meeting rooms in fire stations a popular feature now?
Absolutely. Yeah. I, I don't think we've done a, a fire station without one ever.
Well, the reason, uh, the reason I have like a question about it is I was at a fire station, um, uh, not in our town, but I was at a meeting and every time the alarms went off, it was, it kind of stopped the meeting. So how do you, how do you configure things so that that doesn't happen? Or you just expect it to happen? What?
Wait, wait, when you design it, you incorporate the ability to turn speakers down in training rooms as opposed to not having the ability to turn. I know there's a, there's a station locally that has that exact problem. I've been in there. And you, you can't control the volume and you can't turn it off. But when you design it, you incorporate that in.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you.
It's a good question, Julian. Um, I know for, for meeting space, that's something that, um, you know, we're always looking for more of more public meeting space for, for boards and committees as well as, um, groups in town. So I, you know, having something additional would be, would be great. I know initially the, um, the training room at the current fire station, the intention was to use it for something similar. And it has become very busy with regular fire station activities and they're, it's just not an option anymore.
Our next meeting is, uh, 18th and, uh, conference room B at 6:30 at the town hall. Regular meeting and at that meeting we'll be setting future, um, dates. We didn't forget to bring it here. We just don't have those dates yet. So we have those meetings.
Great. Um, uh, John Rappa, you've got your hand up. What's on your mind?
Mr. Chair, um, the availability of that public room gives you some future proof capacity with the building. The existing building, uh, had a public space which was consumed by training and other facilities. So having that, uh, is an important, I think, integral part of the, the environment.
Good point. Thanks, John. Lisa? You're muted, Lisa.
Thank you. How many, um, how many people are, what's the capacity of this, um, uh, this new room?
I think right now it's, um, programmed for about 50 people. And that's based on, um, the fire department's response and, um, how, how they meet and, and what kind of, uh, people they bring in to, to provide, um, educational opportunities for the department. And so it's a fairly standard size. It's not too big. They'd love, they'd love it to be bigger. I just don't think we can support that on the site.
But if we have tables and chairs up or not.
Yeah, tables and chairs or different kinds of training, CPR training. There's a lot of different opportunities. So the room will have flexibility built into it to allow them to set it up many different configurations.
And, uh, just to, just to better understand, uh, conference room B, is that the second, is that the second public meeting or is that just a separate meeting you're having?
That's just the regular building committee meeting where we're going to be setting the dates, the next in public meeting. For those of you that watched our last meeting, you may have seen that, uh, when we changed the, the intent to, I make it for this town meeting to in, uh, needed a reworking of all of our, our schedule. And we're working with the architects and our, our owner's project and trying, I'm cleaning that up and getting all the better dates for everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Neil?
Um, Neil Spazie, Deputy Chief, just to speak on the, the community room as, as it's termed. Um, again, that's a multi-purpose room. It's a requirement for the town to have a functional emergency operations center, which basically in a disaster scenario, the town is run out of that room. So we need the spaces for that. It equals a training room for the fire department, which, um, gives us the opportunity to bring in outside vendors. And usually when you bring in the outside vendor, um, the department, host department gets more seats. So that's a benefit for us. And so because that room already exists, it only makes sense for the town to maximize their investment by opening it up to the public.
Thanks, Neil. Laura?
When that question about capacity came up, what is the capacity for firefighters in the building and EMTs in the new building versus where we are now?
Will anybody handle that? Uh, HKT, yeah, figured you would.
Well, I can, I could, I can offer, but.
Yeah. So, so right now we have two bedrooms. And we have, uh, three beds in one and four beds in the other. Most we can sleep there comfortably is seven and less than God. The intent within new, within, within new station is to have seven bedrooms that have the ability for double occupancy. So if we get up to, right, seven people a shift, that's great. Person has their own bedroom. And then once we get above that, then they have. Like when I started in the fire service, we had, each of us had our own bedrooms, but there were four beds in each room. So if we, we needed to double up, we could have extra.
Thank you.
And how many do we have per shift now? Gee, I know the answer.
Yeah. So we, we, we have a captain and four fire medics, uh, per shift, uh, right now.
And I can add that we're planning for the potential for a reconfiguration of that, um, of that. So that we would add a lieutenant and more, um, firefighters. So we're planning for all of that. So that the future allows them the flexibility to add to their command structure without affecting any of the, the comps for bedrooms or meeting spaces or lockers or shower rooms. All of that is planned in this current program.
Yeah. It's so difficult. We're, we're looking out 20 years and trying to figure out how many officers, firefighters and what positions we're going to have. And, and even, even further out. So, uh, we, we did, we tried to figure out, we came to the best we could. And that's how we're.
So just to follow up on that, like what would be the ultimate number that this season could, uh, could, um, accommodate for each staff? Would it be seven people per shift?
14.
Is that what you're saying?
No, we, we, we could put upwards of 14 people.
Right.
Got it.
And that's doubling, doubling the room of seven?
Right. That's seven rooms with two beds in each room. So normally you'd have one person per room, which will give us our gender separation and, and take care of all of that. If we ever got to the, where we had 14 people on shift, uh, then you'd have to double them up. But I, I, I.
The addition with the, uh, extra room, sorry Chair, is that, um, during storms or events and such, um, we put on extra staff. So there'll be space available for them as well.
Great. Thanks. Any other, uh, questions or comments from the board? From HKT or the chief or deputy chief or building committee members?
Just thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and speak. We really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very, very much for joining us. Um, really appreciate the time. We look forward to, uh, seeing you again in the future as the project develops.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Um, we'll wait for, uh, to disconnect or move back to attendees. Everyone of course is welcome to stay with us. Uh, while we prepare for our next, uh, agenda item, which is discussion and vote to accept bid on town owned property located at 13 church street. Um, Mike, do you want to set this one up? If not, I can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you know, we have been, uh, this is our second attempt to, excuse me, sell the property at 13 church street, the former fire station. Uh, for the town. Um, we put this out, this particular piece of parcel, this parcel out to bid, uh, before I got there. Um, and we received a single bid for a particular piece of property. Uh, and I think a lot of it has to do with the location, the size, the lot, the lot structure. Um, and the fact that the existing fire station has some significant issues regarding the, uh, materials that are in the building itself, and then some potential, uh, hazards that might be actually on the site. Um, so as I mentioned, you had a single bid, uh, the bid was for $1, uh, for the property. Um, and after conferring with, uh, the DPW director and with, uh, other staff members, uh, we feel that it's appropriate at this time to, for the town to accept that bid and, um, move on from this piece of property and actually allow someone to redevelop it and get it back on the tax rolls. I think at this point in time, it's just sitting fallow and it makes sense, uh, to get that process started and help with the, you know, refurbishing and redevelopment of our downtown area.
With that, I'm also bringing in, uh, Scott Sharptier. Has been an important part of this process.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked Scott to join us tonight, just in case there were any questions that came up regarding the cost to demolish and, and clean up the site. Uh, one of the things that Scott mentioned to me earlier today, because we had a discussion about this was some of the contaminants within the building, we're not even going to know about until it actually is down on the ground because you can't get up on the roof. The roof is unsafe, um, to get near. Uh, to actually test the materials that are in there. So once that building is down, we'll have a much better idea of what's actually in there. And if there are, um, items in there that are of, you know, contaminants, then we, it's a bigger cleanup issue. So with that, I think we would entertain questions from the, from the board.
Any questions from members of the board? Lisa?
Um, and just in what you're talking about now with, with getting the contaminants out, there were, there were some items in there that were in storage. Like I guess a, a couple of, um, um, generators, um, and such, are those going to be taken out of the building or are they going to be left behind?
No, those will be left behind. We've taken everything out of the building that we can. Uh, we actually are not, we shouldn't be in the building at this point in time. So whoever is taking that building down will need to be aware of those and we'll remove them as part of that whole process.
Scott?
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the two generators are army surplus generators. Um, they've never run to my knowledge or to the police chief's knowledge. And there is no means of getting them out. The garage doors cannot be opened. Um, the ceiling and upper, uh, floor supports are, um, compromised. You cannot open the garage doors without potentially collapsing the ceiling. And that's the only way to get those generators out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Laura?
I wouldn't say that I've got a question as much as a comment, um, about this project. It's very, um, it's nerve wracking to me to have a business or a building that's so unsafe in such a heavily trafficked area of town. So I'm grateful that we'll have an opportunity to find a new use for this property. That's all.
Great. Thanks, Laura. Um, I, I will, I will add just a couple of procedural things that, um, we realized this morning that the initial agenda packet that was distributed on Friday did not contain the information for this. Uh, the board had seen most of this, but members of the public hadn't. So, um, so I asked to, and thank you very much for staff for updating the agenda packet, the one that you download from the, uh, the town website now includes not only the full RFP and an addendum, but also the full response, um, from the, uh, from the bidder. So, uh, so that's out there. Um, so anybody who downloaded the packet today has been able to see that. Um, and the other thing I want to, may have mentioned, we've been talking already about the condition of that building. It is a requirement of the RFP that that building be demolished. Um, we did not want anyone to attempt to salvage and reuse it or anything like that. It, it absolutely has to go. So that triggers all of the requirements of making sure it's done safely and, and all of the mitigation for, um, if there's asbestos, if there's lead and things like that, that's on the new owner of this to, uh, to take care of that legally and properly and get all the, the permits for that. Any other questions or comments from the board? We've got a hand up in the audience. I'll go to, if there's nothing. Okay. Aaron Hutchins. Aaron, you don't, you don't need to identify yourself again, but let us know what's on your mind.
Yeah. So I just, uh, in as much as, uh, I, in as much as, uh, Mr. Gallagher's invited Mr. Sharptier to the meeting, as I think he said to, uh, discuss costs, I'm, I'm curious to know if we know what the anticipated cost for, uh, demolishing remediation, et cetera, would be.
Through the chair earlier this year, we solicited a quote from, um, a demolition contractor who's on the, uh, state bid list. His price came in at sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, um, for demolition of the building excluding, um, excluding all remediation. We do have a quote from an LSP, licensed site professional, to do a phase one site assessment. That is a record research and visual inspection only, no testing associated with it. Um, we had a discussion with that LSP. Um, his primary concern, and Mike alluded to it earlier, was that if there is asbestos adhesive in the ceiling, I'm not sorry, in the roof material, um, there is no way to determine that at this point. That determination would have to be made after demolition, uh, when the building is caved in on itself. At which point, the, um, extent of the release, not release, but, um, uh, that contamination being spread throughout the demolition material may be extensive. So I could not find an LSP willing to give us an actual price um, on the remediation without, you know, to test the site, and you can't test the site till it's demolished.
So, a- am I still unmuted?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can say, Aaron.
Okay, so my question is, uh, you know, in consideration of the cost research that was done, um, who was it that, that determined that based on the cost, both known and unknown, that that property had no viable, uh, value to the town?
That was, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, excuse me, that was the discussion, uh, among myself and Scott and a couple of other folks on staff. As we were discussing whether or not the the bid that we got was, uh, appropriate based on what we have, keeping in mind that if in fact there are contaminants in any of those building materials, uh, all of that has to be hauled off to a very specific site, and there's a significant cost associated with that. I just ran into that in a former uh, community that I was in, and it was exceptionally pricey. We, we cleaned up a gas station, and it was half a million dollars just in the cleanups, cleanup of the, uh, of the site.
Our LSP did indicate that he wouldn't, they would not be surprised if remediation costs far exceeded demolition costs in the event there was asbestos in the, uh, roof material adhesive. Um, as far as the usability and viability of that site for buildings, um, it is a very small site with, uh, substantial environmental restrictions when it comes to, um, development with, uh, with the riverfront area adjacent to the, uh, Cold Harbor Brook. Um, it's really primarily beneficial to abutting property owners, um, as a, uh, um, expansion of their existing properties. Otherwise, the, the town would have a, essentially a vacant lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing further.
Great. Thanks, Aaron. The, um, yeah, we, I know I had some discussions, I think it was through, um, it may have been through the prior town administrator or the prior interim, um, with staff on what else could we use the building for and or use the land for if we opted not to sell it? And given the site constraints, um, we really wouldn't be able to construct, no one would really be able to construct anything on there with anything even close to uh, required setbacks. Um, the parking, a parking lot was the only option discussed, and it was really not a good long-term space for a parking lot, given right along Church Street. Uh, the number of spaces that we get would not be a lot. We obviously need more parking downtown. Um, but this was not a, not a good answer for that. The, um, um, the bidder, um, you know, we, we can say who it is, because it's a public record and it's in our packet. Millie Milton, who owns, uh, the proprietor of, uh, the Sale of V restaurant, also in downtown. Um, uh, she owns two abutting properties. So, um, this property combined with those two then becomes something potentially very useful. Where the town does not own any abutting properties, so it really couldn't be useful to us. Any other, uh, questions or comments? With that, you know, we've, Mike, we've gone, you can confirm, we've gone through the legal process of this. We actually went through it. We, we actually went through it twice, because such a long time had elapsed from the first round, and we needed to adjust some property, uh, lines, and that was done at the last town meeting. That eventually we, uh, we had to go out and, and do another one, and that's what we're here to resolve today. Um, if there's no, no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move the board to vote to award the purchase of thirteen Church Street to Mrs. Millie Milton for her price proposal of one dollar and to authorize interim town administrator to negotiate the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement and within the next thirty days. Second.
The, um, just to clarify, I think you added the thirty days from the, the, the original motion that was distributed as recommended by the interim town administrator, didn't include that? Just wanna make, make sure I understand that you're adding that, Lisa?
Yes, I know that. I'd, I'd like to get this done. So.
Yeah, I mean, by, by taking action on it, where we were deciding as a board, we wanna take it done. Mike, does that constrain the town in any way?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my only concern with the thirty days is, uh, we've gotta move some of this through the legal process of actually closing the sale and, um, making sure that all of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and that the, the taxpayers are protected through the whole process. So I, I'm not sure if thirty days is appropriate. It may be. I don't know. We do have, uh, a lot of holidays that are coming up between now and then, and I, I just, I don't, I don't wanna be in a act in haste and repent in leisure, um, situation where we miss something through the process. So I, I'm a little bit concerned about the length of time.
Well, I'd like to at least get it by the end of year. I don't, I mean, we're already November sixth.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you, we will do everything we can to close this sale. Um, but again, uh, my, my job is to make sure that every taxpayer in the town is protected. And I wanna make sure that this process is done appropriately and correctly, and that the purchase and sale is a final document, um, without incurring a lot of cost, a lot of additional cost for the taxpayers.
Yeah, I, I, I think on the assumption that this board votes affirmatively, um, to this motion, which I think we will, um, that's clear direction that we want this sold. We, we don't wanna hold on to this any longer than we need to. But I appreciate Mike's comment that we should move this along, um, hastily without, um, quickly rather, without, uh, but with, I, 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 I am concerned about putting a thirty-day period on that. Because if we go over, all of a sudden, the motion's dead. And then we can't sell it unless we come back and, and regroup, and I don't know what, what that does for the bid. So my suggestion would be to remove that, or if you feel like you need to put a date on there, put on ninety days, and that gives us enough time. If for some reason, there's something that, some crazy reason that we can't close on it within ninety days, then we can have that discussion before that time is up, um, to sort that out.
I would compromise at sixty. But I really wanna have, I wanna have this, for the, I want it back on the tax ranks. The sooner we can do that and get it on in January first, that would be better for the taxpayer.
Oh, I agree. I, 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 again, I think Mike wants to close this as quickly as possible. Sixty days provides more flexibility. Um, you know, again, if something comes up, we will have a few meetings between now and sixty days where we can deal with anything we need to deal with.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, through you, my only concern with sixty days is we have Thanksgiving, we have Christmas, we have New Year's. We're going into a very busy time of year for people not being around. And if we're in the middle of doing something and we need counsel, and counsel's not there because they're on vacation, I, I, I don't wanna run into a problem here with this. I just, um, you know, ninety days, I, I think we can definitely close it ninety days, sixty days, maybe pushing the envelope a little bit.
It also puts constraints on to the buyer of this, that, um, you know, the buyer or the buyer's counsel may have issues that they need to work through, or vacations or anything like that, and I my, my suggestion is either no date or ninety days, um, just, uh, so we don't run into hiccups. Uh, Julianne, you had your hand up?
Um, a procedural question. If we vote on any timeframe and the, the negotiations haven't um, finished by then, do you, you don't have to start all over. Don't we just vote and say, we'll extend for another thirty days or something? We, like, we wouldn't have to go back out with an RFP and the whole thing, would we?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you, no, not, not unless there was a problem with, uh, with the actual closing. Um, but I, I, again, I wanna make sure that we do it correctly and that there are no no potential problems that could crop up, uh, that would cost the taxpayer.
Okay. Lisa, are you willing to amend your motion in any, in any form, given what we've heard from Mike?
Hey, when I heard January, New Year's Eve, that just made my blood run cold. Cause that's.
Hard to believe that's, that's less than sixty days. Hard to believe.
Oh, it's not less than sixty, but, but it's like, you know, I mean, as I say, it's, everybody's happy to get it done, but vacations and stuff like that, it's concerning. So, uh, we've discussed it, we know it's important. So in that case, I'm going to remove all deadline on it. With the hope that, of course, we'll have a new ITA and a new TA by then. So it's, that's another reason why I would like to get this completed before we get into a whole new person and a whole new set of standards.
I know Mike looks at, at, at his job as, as trying to clean things up for the next person. And this is something I'm sure he'd like to get, get sorted out before there's a next person, if at all possible.
All right, so I will.
Julianne?
Well, maybe, maybe it'll.
I'm sorry, Julianne. Lisa was speaking, I think, to her motion, so.
That, I.
Okay, Julianne?
Well, uh, maybe it would all, make us all feel better if, if, um, whoever the town administrator or assistant town administrator is at the time, that we get an update at thirty or forty-five days, just to know what, what to expect. Is, is that reasonable?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, Mike, you can just kee- keep us informed. My assumption is you'll be here for at least another thirty days. Um, and uh, just, you know, keep us informed as, as far as progress goes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you, I, I will definitely keep the, the board apprised of how things are moving along there. Yes.
So Lisa, I'm understanding, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate what I think your motion is, which is, um, the, the original motion drafted by staff, which was to move the board vote to award the purchase of thirteen Church, Church Street to Millie Milton for her price proposal of one dollar and to authorize the interim town administrator to negotiate the terms and conditions of the purchase and sales agreement. Is that accurate?
Yes. Second.
Okay. And, okay, so Laura's, is confirmed her second on that. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Lisa?
I.
Laura?
I.
Julianne?
I.
I also vote I. Voters unanimous in favor. Thank you very, very much. Um, congratulations. Uh, hopefully, Millie, uh, we are very, very excited to, uh, to see what transpires on this property, um, and it's adjoining parcels, and, um, um, that's very exciting. It'll be a little sad to see the building come down, because I, I think we've all grown, grown used to it. It looks like it was a beautiful building once upon a time. Um, my favorite feature of the building now is the tree growing through the roof. Um, it'll be sad to lose that, but that's, that's what there is. Um, okay, so that concludes that item. Scott, thank you very much for, uh, for joining us on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Thank you. Next up, we have, um, discussion, uh, of relocation of polling places for future elections. Mike, I see, uh, Town Clerk Andy Dowd in the audience. Do you want me to bring him in?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you would, I asked, uh, uh, Mr. Dowd to join us this evening to have a conversation about a letter that we received from the school department regarding the relocation of polling places, um, for the, uh, for the elections. So if he's available, that would be great.
Yep, I, well, let's see, I attempted to press the button on him to bring him in. I'll do that again. We're waiting for, uh, for Andy, hopefully, to join us. I could provide a little bit of additional background, as I think as board members know, there's been a discussion over the last few years, um, regarding, uh, the elections have been held at Melican for the last, I don't know, five years or so, four or five years, Andy can confirm that. Um, that is it, to some extent, a disruption for school. When there is school there, it is certainly, um, a different type of disruption. When, um, okay, so Andy, um, pressed the button that says he doesn't want to join, so he, he may have something going on. Andy, if you wanna bring it, bring yourself in, just, uh, just raise your electronic hand. I'd, I'd be more than happy to bring in. Um, the, um, so thi- this is a question that has come up periodically over the last couple of years. And, um, at one point, I was at a school committee meeting where they were talking about the school calendar. This was a joint, this was North Grove, South Grove, and Algonquin altogether, and somebody looked at me and says, why haven't you moved the election, moved the elections? And I said, well, that's, that's not my thing, but it's like, but I said, if, if you think we should move, have the election somewhere else, send us a letter. Um, describe your, your reasons why you think we should take a look at this. And, um, and a month or so ago, they did send that letter. So that's what prompted this discussion.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, through you, um, I spoke with the town clerk about this when we actually received the letter, and he and I spoke at length, and the concern that he had was the, the coming elections in twenty twenty-four, uh, where we have a not only the town election, we have a presidential primary, we have the presidential election in November. Um, there's a, a, a lot going on in twenty twenty-four that might, that will preclude us from being able to actually do anything this coming year. But it does give us time to look at what the options might be for twenty twenty-five, where, at which time we'll only have the single town election in twenty twenty-five, uh, to deal with. So, uh, you know, and, and I talked, as I said, at length, and he felt that that would be a better approach. Um, and here we are to have this discussion, but, um, I, cause I, I, I think the, the problem we're going to run into is, uh, finding a space that is large enough for all of the polling places, uh, as a single polling place for all of the precincts, if you will. And then, um, parking, people flow, that type of thing. So there's, there's a lot that's going to go into this, and a lot of discussion that's going to have to be had between now and then. Um, so it's, as I said, it's not something we're gonna be able to pull off for twenty twenty-four, but certainly we can look at it for twenty twenty-five.
Great. And Andy was able to, uh, to join us. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Sorry about that. When you promoted me for some reason, it disconnected me and I couldn't get back in, so now I'm on another device and I'm here, but thank you to, uh, Mr. Gallagher for pretty much handling what I had planned to say. I did miss a little bit of it as I was trying to get back into the meeting. Um, but the gist of it is certainly, um, you know, we're more than happy to look at, um, other sites. Um, it's, it's always challenging to find a good location. Um, but as Mike said, you know, with the twenty twenty-four election cycle ahead of us, we'll have four elections next year, presidential primary in March, town election in May, and then a state primary in September, followed by the November, uh, presidential election. So to make any changes, um, during that cycle, I think would be very confusing for voters, and it certainly wouldn't be the right time. Um, if I could, I was just gonna add a brief, brief history of um, our locations for many, many years, long before my time. The polling places were located in the elementary schools, um, in town. So we had one precinct in each of the four elementary schools. So that was, you know, disrupting the school day at four, um, buildings. And after much discussion, um, over the years, we were finally able to agree on a consolidated location at Melican Middle School in twenty, two thousand nineteen. And that location's been very successful for us. It's been embraced by the voters, um, and it works well, and I think it really um, eliminates the vast majority of the safety and security concerns that have been brought forth. Um, I had a conversation with the police chief today. Um, if in fact, school is in session in May, which I believe is a possibility based on their current calendar. Um, you know, he, uh, assured me that he'll have additional officers there to not only. to not only su- make sure the inside of space is secure between the voting area and the rest of the school, but also the outside area where we typically do have some issues um with the parking in uh the school um drop-off and pickup um with the buses, um and that's something that we can mitigate with some additional officers, and he assured me that that um would happen.
That's good to hear. Yeah, um one of the things that um that we haven't spoken about yet, but I think we're probably all aware of is is Northborough and Southborough are very interconnected and they always for practical reasons have to have the same school calendars. Um, the elections in Southborough are held at one of their schools that has, I think, enough of a driveway system that they can accommodate elections simultaneous with school, so that if Melican needs to be closed um to safely accommodate an election, nine schools across all the districts end up needing to be closed, uh and that's significant impact. Um at the same time, I I absolutely appreciate the the cleanliness of having a single site for our elections and um and the the realization that the only building, the only town-owned buildings that we have that are big enough to handle all four precincts at once happen to be school buildings. Melican and Algonquin are the only buildings, and Algonquin, you could argue, isn't even town-owned, owned by the the Algonquin District. Um, so uh what I would like to do, you know, it's at some point when we're ready is get a few people together from, you know, all the stakeholders of this and go through all of the pros and cons of every idea that people have. Um and try to figure out the least disruptive way of holding the elections. Um that there's not going to be an easy answer that works perfectly for everybody, you know, going back to for four separate polling places and maybe having them in in a library in the senior center and a couple of churches, for example, that's been suggested. Um, that may, that obviously will work very well for the school department because it doesn't impact them. That makes your job, Andy, a lot harder and introduces a lot of confusion to voters, um at least the first time that we change that, so there's um, there's a lot of pros and cons to go through.
Yeah, my primary concern with that would would be from the voter's standpoint, um you know, I'm happy to administer our elections, no matter how that happens, whether it's in four sites or one site or two sites. And I've done both, um but it's certainly um, you know, much easier from a voter perspective when you know you're going to one building on election day regardless of what precinct you're assigned to. Um and that's been a great change for the for the community, so. We'll see what we can look at for the future, I can assure you that we'll spend some time looking at that um as time allows next year um for, you know, for twenty twenty-five. And uh through some brainstorming, maybe we'll come up with a a good solution, so I'm certainly willing to look at it, it makes sense to to try to um look at alternatives.
Excellent. We've got a couple of of hands up. The first one I'm gonna bring in is Kelly Gannett, who's the uh K eight school committee chair. Uh Kelly, welcome.
Hi, thanks Mitch. Um uh yeah, so I'm I'm calling in for a couple of reasons. One, as you said, I am the chair of the school committee of Northborough K three eight. Um so I'm speaking on behalf of the letter that was submitted and how it is very impactful for our district. Um K through eight, it is also impactful for the other district of Southborough because they are impacted by it, and then it's also for the high school. Um as you said, it's it's too complicated to cancel. You know, have three different ca- district calendars, so we have to have one and having all of it um sorry, my dog just came inside, um having all of it um it it's it's very impactful and it's it's affecting schools and people that um aren't having a problem with it. Melican's just, it was great that we can got it out of the other elementary schools. Um the election, but having it at Melican, it's still very impactful for the the schoolchildren and our community. Um, you know, if if it can't be done before twenty twenty-five, um you know, it's 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 a shame, but um but if we can get it out as soon as we can, I that's what I would urge for, not only for the school committee, but um as a parent. Um I'm now at Melican with my kids and seeing how pickup is and drop-off is on a regular day. Um it's crazy, it's chaotic. Kids just go every different direction of the road. Um they're on their cell phones looking for their parents, parents are, you know, what I am too, waving outside of standing out of the car, trying to get their attention to get your kids into their car. Um and then if you add in people that are coming in to vote on top of that. Um, it's 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 very, it's very um scary, to say the least, so. Um, thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much, Kelly. Um uh Laura?
I agree with a lot of what Kelly said, and while I appreciate how easy it is for voters to have one central location. As a mom, it's really nerve-wracking. I've seen voters, you know, come in between buses, it's really dangerous. And I I worry about my kids or or other children, you know, it's very confusing to them, especially the sixth graders. When they're trying to find their parents and there's strangers that are not query-checked or intermingling with the students. So there's not really a way to separate the children from the voters when they're in the cafeteria for the majority of the school day, and then when you mix in sports and you've got so many new people. So even though we do have an election year coming up, I would really like to see a permanent solution for this outside of all the schools. Um but I'm glad that we're having this conversation today and I do appreciate all that you've done and 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 thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Yeah, I I will add that um as a frequent sign holder outside of election places. Um it is really, really chaotic when Melican is in session and drop-off and especially pickup time in the afternoon while the while there's votes going on. Even just regular local election, which is small, typically, you know, compared to the larger state elections. Um, it's it's, yeah, I I I I absolutely see the need to do something about this and I not gonna propose anything tonight because I don't have any particular easy ideas. Um but I'm very glad we're having the conversation. Right, um Julian?
Oh, is there someone else in the audience you wanna call?
Yes, yep, um, yeah, Aaron Hutchins also has his hand up. Aaron, you're our uh frequent commenter tonight. What's on your mind?
Yeah, would this guy get a life, whoever he is? Uh listen, if there was only Miss Mister Clerk, I just want you to know that uh I support you and your election staff, as you know, uh. But for the uh issue in general, for the school committee um that are concerned and for the uh the town, I just want you to know that there is a committee currently studying town office feasibility. And we could incorporate into that study the possibility of a new town hall that would uh allow the elections to be located centrally at that town hall. Um so I just uh put that out there that uh we'll add that into the possible uh considerations for the firm that we end up engaging with on behalf of the town to study uh the new town hall locations.
That's actually a a really interesting idea. Honestly, I hadn't thought about that. Um, I am sure that would add substantial capacity and traffic requirements to that, but depending upon the possible sites that that you end up looking at and and the options, I think it's worth it to at least that be in the mix. Good idea, Aaron. Lisa?
Well, in response to that, we're working for this for ten years, let alone for two years. As lovely as an idea as it is, I don't think it's uh practical to put that on there because we don't have that kind of time. But uh I do, I do applaud the idea. Although we do have an empty building now, we could probably use, the elevator works. So maybe there's section, there's a whole section on the first floor that could be uh retrofit for the day. But.
I would imagine that any location would need to be um roughly the size of the Melican cafeteria and have parking at least the size of Melican and I can't think of any other town-owned buildings that that do. But I I I I trust that uh that Andy and everybody else will be able to take a look at that.
For West Main Street could accommodate.
Julian?
Question and a comment. Um so so Andy, have you I I this comes up a lot. What what is the accommodation that the senior center could have right now? How does it compare in size to the Melican cafeteria?
The building itself, um just talking in general terms, could potentially accommodate the four precincts. It obviously would cause that building to be completely closed for regular um programming and services on an election day. The parking there is significantly less, I rough numbers again, I believe they have about two-thirds of the parking um available compared to Melican Middle School, so on a busy election day, a state election, a midterm, a presidential. That would pose a challenge potentially if we had all four four precincts there, but certainly that building is a site that we would look at and uh I certainly appreciate Mr. Hutchins' comment on the uh the town hall um. You know, thinking outside of the box on these issues is certainly important. I was even following along during your discussion on the new fire station and that community room, you know, some towns, believe it or not, do use um fire stations for polling places, so. You know, there's there are definitely more options, but uh this is a um a challenge that pretty much every community in the state faces um. As as um the chair said, our schools are typically our largest buildings with the most parking available. And they're used as polling locations in almost every city in town across the state. Um because there aren't a lot of other good options, but we're certainly wo- wo- willing to look into that, and I appreciate the concerns that have been raised.
So um I'm I'm a little concerned by the um by I think the statement that I heard, which was that this would be very difficult to to change the polling place before the twenty twenty-four election. That that's a presidential election, really busy, and if we have um you know, a vote for the fire station. I I would really hope that we could come to a um a solution before before that election. Even if it's, you know, working with the they decide to to call off school that day, but that's that's a biggie.
If I could through the chair, um the school um for a long time now has always scheduled the professional development day for the November elections, both the midterm and the presidential, that is built into their calendar on almost a permanent basis, so that would not be an issue. Um also, March fifth, this is the date of the presidential primary next spring, that is a scheduled professional development day already. The only one that we have to worry about is the uh May town election, as I said. Some of the concerns and the chair did a good job of describing um the bit of a chaotic scene out there in the parking area, especially during pickup and drop-off times. Um as I said, the police to police chief assured me that he could do a lot to mitigate that um with some additional officers on shift and working with the schools to to come up with a better plan and to keep everybody safe, and that's certainly always the goal.
I see Kelly um has her hand up. I think it's it's again, I'm happy to bring you in, Kelly. Uh I apologize if your hand is still up and you don't have anything to add, but
No, I I did have something to add, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I just wanted to mention about the PD day, cause I know um in in the election, we do have it as a PD day. Um, but a PD day, it just means that the kids aren't in session, it doesn't mean that the faculty are not, and in order for them to have a PD day, they need to use all ten buildings for their faculties and staff. Um this previous election that we just had, um there was a PD day, the kids weren't in session. But we had, there was complaints and issues because the staff were taking click parking spots, so as much as the big parking lot that Melican has compared to the senior center, the parking spots weren't even available for voters because they were filled with the staff. Because again, we we can't just close school for everybody um a- all the time, so. Um so that was just in reference of that. The other thing is, I was I was thinking that I meant to talk before is I looked into other towns and what they do, and I saw in some towns, they actually vote in grocery stores. I don't know the logistics and I don't understand like that, but I I mentioned it jokingly to someone and they're like, wait a minute. I can go to Wegmans and shop and vote at the same time, like, sign me up, so um you know, I I I'm just thinking out of the box and just also about the comment about, you know, in order for us, the building itself, the senior center could accommodate, it's just the parking's potential of the question, but it would require them to close down for a day and not have sessions. Oh, I mean, I don't mean to be mean, but I I it one building to not have sessions versus uh ten to not have sessions. It it doesn't seem like it's a it's a it's a no-brainer for me, but again, I'm just, I'm speaking on behalf of the schools also, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Kelly. Yeah, from my perspective, um it makes more sense to close the senior center for a day than it makes sense to close all the schools for a day, even one school, to be honest, if if I had to make a choice between the two. Uh the other, another thing about the senior center that concerns me is the driveway, there's only one in and out, and it's a long, somewhat windy driveway. Melican has the advantage of one in on one side and an out on the other side. Um which is much better traffic flow than the senior center. I worry a little bit about the volume that we'd have on an election at the senior center, or just one one of the things that needs to be in the thought process. Um and Andy, you've got your hand up. What's up?
Yeah, first of all, I just wanted to say certainly I understand, you know, closing one building, um if we were to move the senior center as opposed to the nine or ten schools would certainly make sense, and I understand that, but I just wanted to make a comment regarding the parking when there is a professional development day. Um the school administration at Melican's been extremely cooperative and when they do have a PD day on election day, they instruct the staff to park out on the basketball courts. So they are leaving all of the um parking slots in front available for voters, and that's worked out very well, so that that piece has also been been addressed, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that.
Julian?
So how are we moving forward with this? Who who, how's the conversation going to continue?
I mean, Andy is the is in charge of the election, so um I I think, you know, he would probably drive the process. Um, you know, my, again, my suggestion is um at some point when it makes sense is get some of the stakeholders together and go through the options and understand a little bit more. I'll I'll bet there are folks on the municipal side that could learn more and understand more about the impacts to the school, uh the both education and and the mechanics of the school calendar. Um and I'll bet there are folks on the school side that could probably learn some things about the municipal side and about the holding of elections that that they don't know, and frankly, I wouldn't know. Um and go through some of these ideas. I mean, I love the idea of exploring um, you know, Wegmans or or so- something at Northborough Crossing. Um occasionally, people say, well, can't why can't you have have the election at one of the vacant storefronts, and in theory, sure, we I'll bet there's a, at any given time, there's probably a vacant storefront at Northborough Crossing that has enough physical space and certainly plenty of parking, but the predictability of that um doesn't exist. Um we'd be like the uh the the Hal- what's the Halloween, Spirit Halloween of uh of elections taking over whatever the dead store is at that moment, but we can't predict that in advance the way we should and need to for an election, but going through and and having that discussion, I think is is gonna be good to have.
I I I just would, I'm also curious about um parking lot parking space availability. I I don't really have a good spatial talent, so when I look at that parking lot at the senior center, if the staff is not there, if it's, you know, if it's used exclusively that day for elections. I I um I guess we need to count parking spaces and and also know how many people at any given time are coming in and voting. I know there are busier times than not, but um I think that'd be a good piece of information.
Yeah, did you you track that? Do you have an ability to track those statistics?
Yes, so we can, I can tell you exactly how many people vote, you know, by hour and even by five-minute intervals, um you know, it's already available, so we can easily predict when the um when the spikes in volume are. Um and I'm certainly happy to uh further look into the sites as uh Julian just suggested, um whatever we can do to make things better in the future, I'm I'm all for it. Will be able to say that it would be very challenging again to make any changes leading into the twenty twenty-four cycle, um especially where we already have scheduled professional development days, and that's that's already built into the calendar, so with all due respect to the schools, you know, this year they've kind of got it covered with the exception of May, so. I would hope that uh we can agree to move forward, but wait until after twenty twenty-four.
Well, the other thing, if I could add just one more thing, is if we could really encourage people to do absentee voting. Well, the other thing, if I could add just one more thing, is if we could really encourage people to do absentee voting, we're still allowed to do that, right?
It's actually, everyone can vote early by mail now for every. Um, and that certainly has changed the dynamics on election day, and it'll be interesting to see how those. Statistics, um, come out after the twenty twenty four cycle, especially now that we're getting further away from COVID. Um, you know, twenty twenty two, we still had some COVID concerns, so obviously the. Vote by mail numbers were probably a bit higher, so it'll be, um, interesting to see what the trend is. Um, next year, and that's something obviously we'll monitor and that can, that can help us find a site that may have. Slightly less capacity, but, um, would still accommodate a, a lower in-person turnout of voters that are voting on the election thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
A quick question, uh, Andy, do you happen to know how many spots are at Mellican? How many parking spots?
I believe there's about a hundred and sixty.
So is, and stuff in the back as well? That's not all in the front, is it?
Yeah, that's all in the front. The only thing that's in the back, as I mentioned, the teachers park on the basketball courts and there's some other space for. Maintenance staff in the back, but as far as actual public parking spots, they're on the front of the building.
That's a big size. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody have any other, uh, other questions, comments? Great, um, all right, so we look forward to, uh, to hearing more about, about this, um, over the next. You know, few to several months as this thing, um, as, as everyone thinks about this.
Happy to do it.
Great, thank you very much, Andy. Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly, thanks, Andy.
Welcome.
Hey, great. Um, okay. Next up, we have vote to appoint Mary Thompson interim finance director as the interim town accountant, so, um. So, I think we all know that, uh, that Jason Little has, has crossed the border over into Westboro. Um, he was both our town accountant and town finance director. Um, the quirk of our charter is that the town accountant. Is, is appointed by the select board, the town finance director is appointed by the town administrator, they are one human being. So we now have an interim that I know started a little bit earlier than Jason's departure, so that there was overlap. Um, and, uh, so mechanically, um, uh, Mike has already appointed. Mary as the finance director and to complete the process, we need to. Um, hopefully appoint her as the interim town accountant. Mike, is there anything else you could, you could add to that?
Uh, no, just good, Mr. Chairman, thank you through you, just that, um. Uh, Mary was the former town accountant in Shrewsbury, so she, and she came highly recommended by. Uh, Jason and even having spoken with some other folks, um, they were thrilled. Who are, aren't involved in the town, they were thrilled to hear that she was. Coming on board to help us out and get us through this interim period while we try to find a permanent replacement for Mr. Little, so. Um, I, I, I think she's doing a great job so far, she, she's been in and has done a lot of the transition work already. Um, with Jason, so I'm very confident that we're not gonna miss a beat. Uh, as we go through this process, so I would appreciate the, um. The board's support in, uh, appointing Mary as the town accountant as well as the finance director. Uh, just to, again, for the board's edification, I've entered into a contract with. With Mary, uh, as the finance director and that same rate will hold for anything that she does, whether it's accounting or finance or whatever.
Any other, uh, questions? Lisa.
So now that she'll have two different hats, so to speak. Her, it doesn't matter because it's going to be the same, the same pay schedule for the same hours worked, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you, she's, she's only gonna be working part-time hours similar to what I'm doing, she's retired also. And is, um, isn't really looking for anything full-time, so she's only gonna be working a part-time schedule. But it'll just be a matter of really function as opposed to anything else, it's just the, the function of accountant versus the function of finance director.
And it was the same way that it worked, um, with Jason, correct?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, through you, that is a correct statement.
To answer your question, Lisa.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, um, the only ancillary thing to this is that complication of, um. Two appointing authorities for the same human being, um, I hope that, uh, that as we go through the budget process. Um, we can, uh, seriously consider splitting that off into two separate human beings and have a finance director. And a separate town accountant, I think our, our town has grown to the point where we would benefit. Greatly by that, it's been discussed for years and years and years, um, and for some reason wasn't done, so, um, I, I, you know. Mike and, and I and your successors, um, please make that. Consider, at least consideration part of the budget planning process.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, I can tell you that that's set top of mind as we go through this process.
Excellent, good to hear. Thanks, um, unless there are any other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Mary Thompson to serve as interim town accountant.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Laura, seconded by Julianne, any other discussion? All those in favor, Laura?
Hi.
Julianne.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
I also vote I, vote as unanimous in favor, uh, congratulations, Mary, I look forward to meeting you and, uh, thank you very much, Mike, for. Um, for, for getting this sorted out to provide the, the overlap and coverage that we need, um. Next up, we have vote to adopt the amendments to the charter as proposed by Senate Council to authorize the select board. To amend the town zoning bylaws and replace all references of Board of Selectmen or a selectman with select board or a select board. Member, so I, I'll, um, briefly describe that, which will probably take less time than it took to read that, um. Last town meeting, uh, the town approved, uh, language to ask the, um, the legislature. To update our charter, to change our name from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. They are going through the mechanics of that process and they realized that to, to their end, they, um. Would prefer us to make clear that we want that change to not only be in the general bylaws. But our zoning bylaws as well, so they offered language to that effect, they go through this, you know, uh, as we've talked about before, a number of towns. Over the last several years have done the same thing, so this is the same language that they send out to other towns in the same situation, um. So, um, so I would, you know, request, uh, a motion to, uh, to that effect after any discussion. Um, and that just tells the legislature, yeah, we really do want to change our name, not just in the general bylaws, but also in the zoning bylaws. Laura.
I do, I want the change made. Just in case you're wondering.
It would be really confusing if, uh, speaking of dual roles that we would have, depending upon which set of bylaws we were looking at. Any, any other comments or questions? All right, uh, failing that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to adopt the amendments to the charter as proposed by Senate Council. To amend the home rule petition to authorize the Board of Selectmen by majority vote. To amend the town's general bylaws and zoning bylaws to replace all references to Board of Selectmen or Selectmen. With select board or select board member respectively.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor, Laura?
Hi.
Julianne.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
I also vote I, vote as unanimous in favor, um, thank you very much, so my, my understanding is the Senate Council needs a. A certified copy of this vote, so I trust, um, Mike and I, your staff will be able to, uh, to, to deal with that accordingly.
Yeah, I'm just chairman through you, we may need to, I, I'm not sure that we'll be able to do that without. The approval of the minutes. I'll, I'll check, I'll check into all that.
Okay, yeah, find out, find out what they need, um, if they need us to, to come in and sign. Something to confirm that we voted this, so send the link to the YouTube, whatever we need to do, um.
I'll make sure, Mr. Chairman, that we follow up.
Yeah, excellent, um. Next up, we have, uh, interview subcommittee recommendation to appoint Arthur Giacomara. To the cultural council, um, let's see, Laura, were you part of, uh, no, Julianne, were you part of that, uh? That interview?
I certainly was, and I'm happy to, uh, recommend that Mr. Giacomara is, is appointed. He's been attending many men, meetings of the cultural council already and is. Ready to, um, to become a voting member and take on some, some important duties. Is, he's particularly interested, I think, in administrative and, uh, financial. Uh, duties, so, I, he'll, he'll be a great addition to the committee.
Excellent, that's great to hear, um, failing any other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Arthur Giacomara. To the cultural council for a three-year term as recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other comments or questions? All those in favor, Julianne?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
I also vote I, vote as unanimous in favor, uh, congratulations to the new member of the cultural council. It's exciting, we've appointed quite, I think, quite a few members of the cultural council over the last few months, that's good to see that group, um. Uh, adding to its membership, um, and if I remember correctly, the maximum number of, of members of a cultural council under state law, I think is thirty-five. So there's still room to grow. Um, but we just need at least five at any given time to process the grants. Uh, next up, we have town administrator search update, um, which I guess, um, is from me. So, um, I wanted to let the board and the community know that the, um, the town administrator screen, screening committee. Um, met with, um, our consultants at MRI, who I think did a very good job attracting. A number of, uh, quality applicants this time around. Um, I'm very encouraged, um, we can't talk about these things yet because it's all executive session, hush, hush, because. Um, the state law requires us to do that so that. Many of these people do have jobs right now as town administrators, and if we disclose their names, it. It wouldn't be fair to them because they have not necessarily informed their current employers. Um, this week, uh, tomorrow and the next day, the screening committee will be interviewing several of them. Um, and, uh, we will, at the conclusion of that. Um, my assumption is make a vote on, uh, on forwarding roughly three people. Uh, as finalists to the select board. And, um, we don't know exactly how many there will be, we certainly don't know who they will be yet, and then we have already talked about. Meeting the following week, I think it was, um. The, what was it, uh, let's see, should have looked at this beforehand. Twentieth and twenty-first, I think, um, twenty. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, there was.
That was a.
I know we've talked.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think it's fifteenth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is next week already, yep, um, yep, you are correct, um. And so next week, this board will meet to interview, uh, the finalists. Uh, as soon as those names can be, they will be. And then, um. We will, was that, was that a dog barking or? It's okay, uh, and, um, and then hopefully, uh, we will have named. A new town administrator before Thanksgiving, we don't know when that person will start because it depends on how much notice they need to give. Any current employer, et cetera, um, so, uh, so we're, we're in, hopefully in the home stretch. And I just want to let everyone know, um, uh, it, it's a, it's a really good qua- good pool of candidates this time around. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions, Lisa has, has of course, joined the screening committee, so, um, so she's been there. I don't know if, uh, and Mike was there for, uh, for a lot of us also, so if anybody has any questions about the process. If not, we'll see you all next week for interviews. Um, next up, we have select board member reports, uh, let's see, Lisa, any reports tonight?
Oh, yes, I had none last time, well, that won't happen for a while. I think I was just too tired from everything we talked about the last time. Okay, so the very first thing I want to say is that, of course, being the volunteer coordinator for, uh. Getting new people on these boards, I'd like to still do a shout out and say. We need volunteers, we need to have new people come in and. And, uh, give us their time and expertise and learn about town and help us, uh, come into the, the next, uh. I don't know, century, so that's the first one, um. The second would be, um, I attended the housing authority, uh, last week. And, um, they went through their budgets for the year, and it's interesting to hear them, um. Talk about the fact the state has a certain way of doing everything and there's a process that's quite lengthy, so when people need to have things fixed. It takes even longer to do it than you'd expect because you'd have to, you have to go through so many processes. Um, but they did ask again if they can have, uh, uh, sixty-three Main Street. There are present town hall to be able to house, um, some more of their seniors. Um, okay, I also attended, um. Hold on a second, um, I attended the, um, the. Dulmen's Club at the senior center. And the men there had quite a few questions and quite a few suggestions, and I'm gonna bring those to the forefront. Um, the five things that they brought up in topic were, um, the, uh, old fire station at Thirteen Church Street. We got it done, there it is, so I hope the men are very happy about that, um, they also talked about the clickers. Uh, they talked about the police chief being, um, appointed, they talked about Four West Main Street, and they talked about the White Cliffs. So, I will, I will address two of those, uh, the clickers are one of the things that we have been talking about since last May. When we had a, a new person running, um, for, um, the, the moderated position. And one of the, one of the big selling features was the ease of being able to vote, uh, with electronic voting. So at that time, there was discussion, I think, of even pricing and you could rent, you could own. But, um, so we talked about it in May, in August of twenty-eight, we talked about it in our goal setting for electronic voting. September eighteenth, we had meeting minutes that we discussed it. And, um, I'd like to be able to put it on for our November twentieth, uh. Um, select board meeting to get the pricing and to. Utilize actually ARPA money to buy it, because if we, if we use the ARPA money. We don't have to wait until town meeting to get it, we would just buy the, uh, buy the apparatus or rent the apparatus, it's, uh. Not anything that has to go before town meeting. The only thing I think a town meeting vote is when you want to be able to get the money from certain appropriations. Um, so I would ask that we can have that, uh, that on our, um, November twentieth, uh, meeting. Um, and also the police chief succession plan, I think one of the things we need to start doing is. Creating a succession plan for a lot of these positions, because it, as we've learned even in our, uh. TA selection meetings that every town is going through this, we're not the only town that's having people come and go or retiring. Um, it's just natural order of things and with time, um. People aren't staying for ten, twenty years at a position. So that you do have to have a succession plan, and I think that's one thing that's very important for us to do. So with that in mind, um, with the police chief, um, we first discussed that around August. And we had to wait till he came back from vacation to discuss it with the chief, and on October seventeenth, he wrote a letter, letter of recommendation. And, um, so. On twenty-third, the discussion were all in favor of doing this and moving ahead, and. I would like to be able to get that also completed by, um, our meeting on November twentieth, because. As the chief had asked, we'd like to get our new chief involved in the budget. Making, uh, what have you, and I think that it's important to get this moving along. Um, all right, a couple more and I'll be done, so, um. We also discussed both of these things in our goal setting on August twenty-eighth, so it was something the whole board was, was very much in favor of. Um, I attended Jason Little's, um, uh, going away, uh, celebration, and we will miss him. I think he's very well-liked by the town and not only our town, but several towns, Westboro being one of them. And I think he's done a great job and it's a nice, a nice thing to give him another shout out. Hope he eats all that candy he got for his going away party, um. Okay, oh, I attended the CPC meeting, and that was quite interesting, um. There was a, a, a discussion by, uh, Stuart. Unfortunately, I can't remember his last name, and, um, he. Unfortunately, I can't remember his last name, and um, he talked about what CPA funds can be used for. And uh, they talked about the White Cliffs as well, but what I was funny interested in is he made a remark because um. Uh, there's two attorneys on that CPC Commission, and um, one of them had said to the speaker. That he felt that um, when they were talking about something to do with the um restriction, um, that. That the attorney um. Working at KP Law would be what KP Law decided that that KP Law's. Decisions or or thought processes are, and he said, absolutely not. He said. It's your attorney. It's the attorney himself. It's not the firm. The attorney is the person who's the one who uh. Does all that for you, represents you. I thought that was interesting. I just wanted to bring that up because I thought that that's something that I didn't. Really think about until he mentioned it. Um, so. I would also like to create a a discussion time for us to go ahead with our legal representation and have the talk that we never did have and make our decisions. Uh, I would like to make that soon as well. And finally, um. Well, I think that's finally enough. So I am going to close my um. Close my reports in hopes that I do have those two uh requests for our next meeting on the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. I'll I'll discuss those two with Mike and see if we can be prepared. For uh, for items then. Uh, let's see, Laura, any reports tonight? Laura, you're muted.
That's just my first time tonight, right? Playing the dogs. So yes, it was um, I too got to attend the uh, the farewell to Jason Little, and I certainly wish him the best in his center, and I look forward to meeting Mary. Um, I was excited to see Ally Wayne, who's the Director of Recreation. At the event, and um, she's got great news. So I know there's always a waitlist for the summer recreation camp. This is gonna be really exciting news for families in town. They're going to be doing the registration on Saturday, February third, so it's gonna make it easier for working parents to be able to log in. And register their kids, and they're also going to be adding fifty more spots per week to try and offset that um. The the waitlist that has been developed over the years. So those are really great recreation camps. If you've got questions, definitely reach out to. Uh, recreation for that. She also wanted me to mention that there's still time to sign up for the Turkey Trot. On Thanksgiving, which is a great fundraiser for Northborough Recreation. Um, it that will certainly be a fun one coming up. You can register on their website. I got to attend the Assabette fiftieth anniversary, Assabette Regional High School. It was a really beautiful celebration. Of fifty years, um, and they unveiled some their their new logo and a lot of the great accomplishments of the school. I also got to attend the CPC meeting, and I really enjoyed the presentation from the Community Preservation Coalition Speaker that Lisa had mentioned. And there are going to be meetings coming up where the CPC is going to be discussing the applications for CPC funding, so definitely. Sign up for town news if that is something that you would like to follow. Um, this weekend, you may have seen Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts hanging door flyers up for scouting for food. This is the single most important. Um, event to gather food for the food pantry in Northborough. On Saturday morning at nine o'clock, please plan to leave your bag of of food out, and there will be scouts coming around to pick that food up between nine and noon. So if you've got any questions about that, you can reach out to your local scout. And last but not least, um, on Sunday, November twelfth, there will be the Hometown Heroes Rolling Rally. This is gonna start at eleven o'clock AM, and it's gonna leave out of the back entrance of Algonquin Regional High School, and it will end at the American Legion. If anybody is invited to come out and hold flags, this is gonna be the veterans that will be driving down Main Street. All the way from Algonquin to the Legion, so it's a nice way to show your support for our hometown heroes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Laura. Julianne, any reports tonight?
Just a couple of things. So um, I was also in attendance at the Dull Men's Club meeting and um. I I, and even in other conversations, I haven't heard a person say that that they would um. That they would be against electronic voting at town meeting. It seems to be a really popular thing, and um. I I support the idea of having Andy come and tell us all about it and how much it will cost and how to. Get it started. Um. But I, and the other thing I just wanted to bring up is the very. Informative and um, I think comprehensive proposal that we received from Sustainable Northborough. And I hope that we can talk to them very soon, particularly in light of all the new building projects. This is a group that I've come to know a little bit, and they are extremely knowledgeable about um. Uh, uh, about state initiatives and grants and how did, how did do this better? So um. I really support getting them on our agenda very soon, and that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Julianne. Um, I just have a couple of things uh to which we've already been mentioned. Uh, Jason's farewell party was a lot of fun, and um, one of the best. Things about it is the board and and all levels of staff um, having the opportunity to uh to chat informally and socially together. Which is something we don't do enough of, and um, I I appreciate um Mike's uh, you know, eagerness to have us join that that event. Um, and I hope, uh, hopefully not for too many farewells, but hopefully we'll uh, we'll have some other uh, other times to just casually chat with our our important and valued members of staff. Together. Um, I also attended, along with Laura, the Assabette fiftieth anniversary uh event, which was this past Friday morning. I'm gonna thank Superintendent Hool for um, for uh, for for chatting with a large number of people there, including our state legislatures um, and uh, and and a lot of folks. Um, and I got a great tour from uh, a number of very eager students of the building. It is uh, really fantastic to see all the excellent programs that are run there. It's. You 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 walk into one room and you think you're in a giant hair salon, and you walk down the hall and you think you're in a a plumbing shop, and then you walk further down. It's an interior design place. It's uh, it's really something uh to be seen. I also want to thank um, our Northborough representative to the, to the Assabette School Committee, who is serving as as the chair right now. Virginia Sims George for uh, for greeting and giving an excellent talk uh as part of that process. And lastly, I want to thank the library for having a fantastic haunted house event, what I hope is their first annual. Library Haunted House, Haunted Haunted House, where they turned the whole building into a haunted house, and there were uh drama students from Algonquin that were jumping out and screaming and yelling, and. It was very loud, um, but it was a lot of fun, and um, and the library staff and all the kids that helped out did a really, really good job. There. Um. And and that concludes Board Member Reports, uh Town Administrator uh Reports. Mike, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things real quickly. I want to thank the board for coming out to uh. See Jason off. I think that was a a nice uh opportunity for the, as you mentioned, the board to intermingle with the rest of the. Staff within Town Hall. I think it's important that. You know, uh, we all have a chance to interact and and talk with one another. Um. In keeping with trying to move this process along, I just wanted to let you know that I've already sent an email off to. Uh, Council to begin crafting the purchase and sale agreement for Thirteen Church Streets. I just want to let you know that email is already en route and uh. Should be, should be started tomorrow. So uh, that's it for me tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Diane, anything for us tonight?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, lastly, there is any other business to come before the board not previously anticipated? Um, Mike, I haven't heard anything, so I assume there is nothing.
I, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything for that.
Okay, hearing nothing else.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just one other thing, just remind the board that next. Your next meeting on the twentieth will also be the. Uh, tax classification hearing, so that is a fairly, that will be a fairly extensive. Meeting um, that evening while we we hear from. The assessors and also from other members of the community, so keeping that in mind uh, for what you want on that agenda. Um, I would be cautious about how much. You try to put into one night.
We'll also need to be hearing from the um, Community Affairs Committee about the tree lighting in Monora Events. Um, and their request to uh, and their request to close the road and um, and so forth. That has to be that night, so it. Uh, so it's done in time. Have a busy night.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you're also gonna have two um liquor license hearings that evening as well.
Okay. Put that in my notes. All right, and last up on our agenda, as always, public comment, and we do have Scott Rogers. Haven't heard from you tonight, Scott. What's on your mind?
Hey, good evening. Scott Rogers, twenty-six Tom Park Drive. Uh, Mr. Gallagher, you answered my primary question. I was gonna ask if the tax rate. Uh, was was scheduled for the November twentieth meeting. Um, along those lines, do you have a forecast yet of other budget milestones that would? Be foreshadow for appropriations and financial planning, uh, some of the budget milestones when those those committees uh are looking to meet.
Uh, Mr. Chairman through you, uh, not as yet. We're just, we're just starting the process. I'm actually meeting with the department heads. Some of them have finished their budgets. Um, I'm still waiting for. For others to send me their information, and then we can begin the process. Uh, one of the things I want to do also is do a higher level. Look at what the revenues are, uh, and just kind of do a high level expense, just to kind of see where we're at. Um, but. I I I need to check into the revenues first. I have not had an opportunity to do that.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Um, I will add that uh, I think we probably all got an email about certified free cash, which was up about a million dollars from the prior year, so that's. Not a bad thing. Um. All right, oh, Scott, I think has his hand up again, I'm assuming. Scott, I don't know if this is your hand up a second time, which is fine, or or if uh, you don't have anything else.
Yeah, a a second time, because I.
Sure.
Free cash was a a question, so up a million, so what what was the total on that?
Oh, I don't have it in front of me, but if you give me a second, I'll see if I can find it. Looks like if I'm reading correctly from an email that we got from the state on October twenty-sixth, three million five hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred twenty dollars. Of uh, general fund free cash, uh, and it's also uh, some numbers on the various enterprise funds.
Great, thank you very much for providing that.
Sure. Good, thanks, Scott. Okay, and that, I don't see any other public comment this evening, so um, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Uh, all those in favor of adjourning, Julianne?
I.
Laura?
Hi.
Lisa? You're muted, Lisa. I saw it as an I, but I'm gonna wait for the voice.
Right, I'm gonna say I before the dog does.
I also vote I, and uh, with that unanimous, we are adjourned at nine twenty-seven PM. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.